Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Councilor Canehill. Yes. Councilor Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Palucci.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Freiden.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer. Yes. Yes, Councilor Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nat.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Fallon.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trehan.
Yes.
Present.
Can we all please rise from all the silence? Hopefully you can all remember, uh, former State Councilor Deborah Smith Walsh was father of the past President Smith. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our law, indivisible, liberate and just.
Any motion to accept the minutes?
So, made seconded to accept the minutes, all those in favor, opposed, march in carriage, Councilor Capano.
I'd like to suspend the rules and I want to take unusual twenty-six auto body off the table.
Motion made, seconded, to remove from the table, roll call.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Canehill, Abson, Councilor Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Palucci.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Freiden.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nat.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Fallon.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
I'd like to make the motion that we grant, uh, this based on a neighborhood meeting, uh, held with, uh, a Manino, Manino family and residents of, uh, Oakville, Orchard, West Mettoon area, uh, a long month ago. And we came up with some, uh, stipulations that satisfied both the owner of the property and the neighbors, uh, that attended the meeting. Uh, so, I'd like to make a motion to grant with the following stipulations, that no tow trucks will be on the street, no equipment stored outside the building, including tires, vehicle parts, humpers and glass, cannot work on cars outside the building, no flatbed trucks to be parked or stored on property or parked on Oakville Street or West Mettoon Street, premises will be kept free of trash and debris, no excessive noise, any loaded dumpsters will be kept covered to control dust and debris, no cars will be parked on the Oakville or West Mettoon Street, no work to be done on the street, no parking of vehicles on the street, petition to abide by all city of Lynn ordinances, including rules and regulations, signed permits, license permits, hours of operation Monday to Friday, eight to five thirty P.M., and Saturday, three A.M. to one P.M., uh, signed to be consistent to Maninos and Dantios to blend in with the neighborhood. And both the owner of the property and the petitioner agreed to the council's stipulations within the lease. Uh, based on these stipulations, I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Second. Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Canehill, Abson, Councilor Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Palucci.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Freiden.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nat.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Fallon.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
Uh, before we go on to the next, I'd just like to recognize some elected officials that are here, uh, members of the school committee, uh, school committee man, Sally Gallo, uh, Maria Carrasco, Rick Stavrid, John Ford, Donna Capola, and, uh, and I believe the mayor was here, uh, and I think I, did I miss anybody? And superintendent of schools is here. Thank you, Dr. Lee.
Uh, communication, we have, uh, thank communications from Rhonda, the mayor, dear councils, I'm hereby appointing John Whitney, thirty-seven Birmingham Street, to the Grand Army Museum trustees to replace Donald Donther, his term is effective immediately and will expire on April first, twenty sixteen. I am hereby appointing Daniel McManus, sixty-nine Utah Act, to the Educational Cable Access Committee, his term is effective immediately and will expire on August seventh, twenty fifteen. I'm hereby appointing Daniel McManus, sixty-nine Utah Act, to the Cable TV Advisory Board, his term is effective immediately and his co-terminist, sincerely, Drew Flanagan Kennedy there.
Uh, if there's no objection, we'll take them all together, and what you've motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Canehill, Abson, Councilor Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Palucci.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Freiden.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nat.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Fallon.
Yes.
We have a communication from Catherine Latham, Superintendent Schools, dear Council President, this letter is in response to your request dated May twenty-nine, twenty thirteen. On June thirteenth, twenty thirteen, the Lynn School Committee voted unanimously to send a letter of endorsement to the City Council to support a public vote on September seventeenth, twenty thirteen, on the bond needed to support the Marshall Middle School project. I ask that the City Council take action to allow the required bond question to be included on the September seventeenth, twenty thirteen ballot. The wording for that question has been approved by both Massachusetts School Building Authority and Lynn Attorney James Willmanner and is included in this request. The current Marshall Middle School is not large enough to house its in district students and support their academic and extracurricular needs. As part of the MSBA process, Lynn completed a feasibility study and approved and accepted by the MSBA. The conclusion of that study was that the only viable option for Marshall was replacement as opposed to repair. To that end, the MSBA has allowed Lynn to go forward with plans for new school with a project reimbursement rate of eighty percent of allowable cost. This building project is virtually important, is vital important, I'm sorry, for the long term well being of the school system. Without approval, Marshall will be removed from the MSBA building project list. Lynn will no longer be eligible for any future projects and Lynn will need to repair Marshall and maintain the building for the foreseeable future while absorbing one hundred percent of the cost. The Lynn Public School Department has seen increased enrollment of nearly nine hundred students over the past five years. By the time our current kindergarten grade one, grade two students are in grades six, seven and eight, there will be one thousand more students than currently in those grades today and there will be inadequate space to educate those students. We need to increase student capacity and improve student progress. A new Marshall Middle School will put Lynn on track for improving the schools and the city. Please feel free to contact me if you need any additional information. Sincerely, Catherine Latham, Superintendent Schools. Uh, the bond order to pay costs of construction originally, equipping and furnishing a new middle school, be it ordered by the Lynn City Council, the City of Lynn, as follows, that the city appropriates the amount of ninety-two million dollars for the purpose obtained cost of construction, constructing, originally equipping and furnishing a new Thurgood Marshall Middle School to be located at ninety-two dash one eighteen dash one twenty Brookline Street address in Lynn. Including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of school children for at least fifty years and for which the city may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, set amount to be expended at the direction of School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the City Treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is hereby authorized to borrow the sum of ninety million dollars under and pursuant to Chapter forty-four, Section seven, clause three of the general laws as amended and supplemented, or any other enabling authority, to issue bonds or notes with the city therefore. The city acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-tionary discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the city incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA, on account of the project shall not exceed the lesser of eighty percent of eligible approved project cost as determined by the MSBA, or the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, and that the amount of bond authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project coming agreement relating to the project that may be executed between the city and the MSBA. Further audit, that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the appropriate officials of the Crown Law of Massachusetts to qualify under Chapter forty-four A of the general laws, any and all bonds of the city authorized by this order, and should provide such information and execute such documents as such officials of Crown Law may require in connection therewith. But do you want to finish the whole bit of the issue separately?
I'll do one at a time. Uh, I just, I just want to point out, there's just one minor insipidity, uh, America, one says ninety million, the other one says ninety-two million, and the correct number is ninety-two
Order that the following question be submitted to the voters of the City of Lynn at the preliminary election to be held on Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty thirteen, pursuant.
There are two separate votes here. Uh, the first vote is actually the bond order, uh, the second vote, which, uh, the court will get to in a moment, um, after we bring this up, will be actually putting the language, uh, cross the language on the ballot for the people of the City of Lynn to decide. So, what's the wish of the, uh, of the council? Motion made by, uh, Council Seer, seconded by Council Barton, discussion.
Mr. President.
Council Barton.
Mr. President, I, I think this is one of the most important things that we're doing in this city right now. Um, this is a must for the City of Lynn. If this doesn't happen, um, what's gonna happen is really gonna be a shame, because there isn't gonna be enough places for the kids to get now. So, I just want it on record that I strongly support the Marshall middle school.
Council Seer.
I just, uh, I'm, I'm John Ford from the school department. Come find out how important this vote, really, it's buzzy and bitty and somebody other council here. Simple math, we, the school, if we don't approve this state and prove this bond, we won't get the eighty percent back to the city of Lynn. Uh, we have to win, which we will have to do, to win to repair this problem. It's condition wise, it's, it's the number two school in the, in the state for the condition of the law. Of course, I know some people say these figures are exaggerating, but they're not, over fifty million dollars to repair that school. And that tied up would be on the taxpayers of the City of Lynn if we don't approve this bond. So, every single person, it's the most important vote anybody could vote, including the Council of Schools, and I think we're proving that tonight by all the skin and their run with our homes to say that we're all in favor of this, because if we don't vote in favor, the target, if we come down the road, it's a lot worse than not getting eighty percent back. And the kids and the teachers and the people in the city are suffering tremendously, need that school. And I, I hope everyone will vote in favor of this.
Council Trehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to add to that, that if we don't approve this, the voters of the city that will go off this list, and it takes, they say like eight to ten years to get back on this list, so we kind of, you're off a state's radar if we don't approve this. I mean, this, to me, is a no brainer, it's, it doesn't give us eighty percent of money to build a brand new school. You know, it's the reason that people leave this city, the reason people come, is because of your school system and your education that they get here, so, I can't stress it enough, I'm going, doing a doorside campaign, telling people that it's how important this, you know, that this is, this vote, so, just hope that the people support us. Thank you.
Council Frank, President, recent members, I think, recent thing, my colleague, it's a no brainer. Uh, I did, do just want to reemphasize that there should be no increased taxes for the citizens of Lynn, all its common sense stuff out there. This will not increase any taxes in the City of Lynn. I'd also like to just go on record on behalf of Council Canehill, who here tonight, he had previously said on a business trip, he just gave the guys a little letter, but essentially he's in favor, he's attracted, retaining the intent of delivering a higher quality of life and greater benefits to all the residents of many generations of the community. Who's in favor of this in the, uh, ballot?
Thank you, Council. Any additional comments, discussion? Roll call.
Council Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Canehill, Abson, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Freiden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Nat.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fallon.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
And, and a question for Catherine Latham. Just a procedural question, I know in the past that, uh, we put emergencies on certain bonds and had to come back to redo those, the technicalities, does this require emergency? Should we take an emergency, or would that impede the progress of this vote?
It's like, this, take the vote, there's no need for emergency, uh, I agree with the, the emergency, the, uh, council will be, will be, will be, uh, uh, uh.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmen.
Next order is, order the following question be submitted to the voters of the City of Lynn at the preliminary election to be held on Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty thirteen, pursuant to the Lynn City Charter. Question, shall a vote of the Lynn City Council dated August thirteenth, twenty thirteen, wherein it is voted to approve the borrowing, borrowing of the sum of ninety-two million dollars for the purpose of the design, construction and completion of a new Thurgood Marshall Middle School at ninety-two and one eighteen, one twenty Brookline Street, Lynn, be approved contingent upon eighty percent state reimbursement and allowable cost as approved by the Massachusetts School Building Authority?
This is the language that will be on the ballot.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Council Seer, seconded by Council Barton, discussion. Roll call.
Council Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Canehill, Abson, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Freiden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Nat.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fallon.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
And on the emergency.
Council Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Canehill, Abson, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Freiden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Nat.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fallon.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
Same here. Council, Council Seer.
Thank you. Uh, I think you are, uh, stalking all they played in this, again, this, this is the council tonight. Uh, I think you guys are very proud and, um, proud to be a council of all of your own school.
Thank you, uh, Council Seer. I'd also like to, uh, you know, recognize, uh, Dr. Latham. Without Dr. Latham's leadership, I don't think that we are here allowing the people to make this decision. Um, also, Council Barton, who actually lives in that immediate area, uh, but most importantly, Council Seer and school committee man, John Ford, who spent, uh, you know, countless hours on the, on the committee, working together collaboratively to go through it to this point, so, uh, thank you all, job well done. Next item.
Uh, we have a communication from City Treasurer, Richard Fortucci. Dear Council of City of Lynn, as foreclosed on the following property, fifteen Roland Street, please adjust your records accordingly. Sincerely, Richard J. Fortucci, Treasurer.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
Public hearings.
Council Lozey. Do you want to make a motion?
Uh, this, this, go forward, we didn't, the public here, we just want to, uh, uh.
Nope, it's not the, uh, do you want to make a motion to go to the public hearing, surprise the rules? Sorry, we don't, thank you. Motion made, I go to the Horizon public hearing, wait there a second, but, uh, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
Petition of Horizon's property, grounds placed one jointly on pole on the southwest side of driveway at a point approximately seventy-three feet, north west of it from the north side of Springvale Avenue, at its intersection of the driveway.
Uh, open the public hearing, if anybody wishing to speak in favor. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing, all those in favor, open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition?
Sir. Yes, uh, made rich day, old, since very few spring go out, and then, then, uh, thirty years. There's already, uh, a little history with Horizon, in front of my house, I have a pole in the house, and I want to put it up adjacent to it. Uh, about three years ago, I did, I did some work, and I drove a little beat all over my, in front of my house, and on the grass there. Called a few times, come clean it up, and then it is, had to clean it up myself, it's a deep drive and all that stuff, and you collect the grasses there. Obviously, it's not, it's broken too old in one driveway, and now, there's another pole in there, there's room, and I need to work on it, but, I mean, my driveway, my driveway, that's still up, so everybody don't think that, uh, that he's got a pole there.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hello, my name is Alba Riquelme, I live in Happy Levensburg, uh, one of the concern that I have, uh, both what, um, is the case of the next vote on is, the snow removal, uh, plenty of second pole there, um, would bring more snow into front of our house, making it even more dangerous, uh, just the right there on the turn, there's more snow that comes in front of that one pole, uh, fading out of my driveway, uh, during the winter time, is there a, what about the channel, and what it would be like?
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody else in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing, for all those in opposition, close the public hearing. Council Lozey.
Mr. President, um, I wish Horizon were here, to hear the, uh, the neighbors. Um, I'm not, we used it, what I've learned about this, and, uh, I, I don't want to close the door, I want to allow them an opportunity to relocate this pole if it's necessary, however, uh, there's just no way that I can go along with this right now, and I make a motion on the table, this, you know.
Okay, motion made, and, uh, seconded to table, uh, which is on the table, roll call.
Council Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Canehill, Abson, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Freiden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Nat.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fallon.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trehan.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
And just procedurally for the residents that spoke, I mean, it wasn't approved, it wasn't denied, except put off for, uh, another time until, uh, Council Lozey can speak with Horizon, so, thank you.
Petition of light tower fiber networks with permission to install approximately three hundred and eighty-five million feet of four inch PVC concrete enclosed conduit studied National Bridge Manhole Seventeen connecting to National Bridge Manhole Sixteen and also to National Bridge Manhole Seventeen, and another conduit from there to one seventy South Comet Street.
We can open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor. Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor, open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition, close the public hearing. Councilor Capano, excuse me.
Uh, I, I just can't believe that these utility companies are, first, it's hard to get them, and you have a problem, now they're not even show up, so, you know, I, I'm not in favor of this, I'm on the table of this, I like the table, but I just gotta say, you know, especially in the Battle of the National Bridge, they are not treating the city right. I mean, we have problems with them on the runway, just disrespecting, uh, business owner, new business, casino owner on the runway, uh, very difficult to deal with them, a parking issue, they got a parking lot there, which they're basically saying, no one can ever use, it's just an empty lot, this is what they want for a lot, it's so ridiculously expensive, and by denying them use of that lot, what they tell the city is, no one will ever be able to use that lot. It's very hard to deal with, and when you try to call them, you don't get an answer, you, we have a following guy, keep it up with the street lights, and now they don't even show up. I'm not, we have a public hearing, I don't know what, what is, does anyone know what M H, connecting M H seventeen to M H sixteen means? I mean, are they digging up the street, the sidewalk? I have no idea. So, I'm, I'm not gonna, uh, maybe mostly rant this, you know, especially where they don't even call, they don't show up.
Take that as a motion to deny, second, discussion. Roll call.
Council Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Canehill, Abson, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Freiden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Nat.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fallon.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
Before the next public hearing, uh, Council Lozey, you've had a motion to suspend the rules to, uh, present a citation. Take that, move your, Mr. President, second, discussion, all those in favor, opposed, uh, motion carries, Council Lozey, who might come up. The seemingly women are recognized, uh, somebody of, a person who has dedicated her life to, uh, the Lynn School Department and, uh, the children of, uh, the Special Ed Program, uh, Aphrodite Freida Pacos. Uh, yes, she's here. The, the City of Lynn and all the children of the City of Lynn, uh, were honored to have her work for thirty-nine years in the Special Ed Department, and, uh, it, it, Freida, can you mind if I'm up there? You know, I, I get people, uh, work for the school department for fifteen, uh, twenty years or twenty-five years, but you really, uh, I, you really don't meet too many people that have, uh, dedicated their lives thirty-nine years, uh, for the Lynn School Department, so, on behalf of the entire City Council, Council Lozey, I mean, we'd like to recognize Freida, uh, for service to the City of Lynn and, uh, and all the children over here, literally
Thank you. I love working for the school, uh, Special Ed Department. Uh, I love the children, and I love to help them, helping out with, uh, special game and, uh, the, uh, summer school. It, to me, it was wonderful.
Next item.
Petition of Casa Olina Mexican restaurant, a turbo element, said permission for B R line license at an existing restaurant, even and take out at one eighty-three Lower Street.
I can open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor, open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition, close the public hearing. Council Seer.
Mr. President, this time I'll read the tables, I mean, the bottom, the bottom, the business board.
Motion made, and seconded to table, roll call.
Council Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Canehill, Abson, Council Capano. Yes, Council Palucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Freiden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Nat.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fallon.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
Next petition, petition of Neighborhood Development Associates, formerly Fifty-Five and Fifty-Nine Union Street, to allow the reconfiguration of three lots, two of which are located in a business district, and to create three new lots, lot one and two, to be used to build two single-family homes, and lot three will be combined with manure via butter, and will be used to create a private lot.
Open the public hearing, if anybody wishes to speak in favor? Anybody wishes to speak in favor? Anybody in favor? Seeing no one wishes to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing, if anybody in opposition? Anybody wishes to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishes to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counselor Foitucci, motion to approve. Motion made, seconded to approve. Discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Caneal, Absin, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Foitucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Panam?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Next petition, petition of La Corada Restaurant, Twenty-two Union Street, for permission for beer and wine license at an existing restaurant.
Open the public hearing, if anybody wishes to speak in favor?
Mr. President, to the council on the Twenty-Sixth Alley, and we have a petition of La Corada Restaurant, Francisco Martinez, the principal, and the members of his family. There are members of the council who probably would be caught, but the work I did with Counselor Foitucci several years ago, in a building that was disappearing on the corner of Union Street and Shirley, and replaced it with a mini mall, with over a million dollars on it. Several years later, now that mini mall flies, so it's been owned business, and it's already owned business, and it's had a tax revenue for the city, it's created a restaurant, a residence. I met Francisco, by accident, nine or ten years ago, he worked in the kitchen with the Mary in Centennial Park in P. D. He came in and he said, you know, have this dream, I want to have a restaurant. And I must have cleared, said, Lynn, that's what I'm talking to you. And said, well, you know, the process, you need to do whatever the mall had built. He began his restaurant business about six years ago, it's been successful, it's a small operation, it's family owned, it's about five or six tables, and now he wants to have beer and wine by table service, and he wants your service. So, this is the first step along the way to achieving that, how this will go. If you grant approval for the petition, we got to appear in front of the licensing board, we have to appear at the ETC, and if we do all those tools, then we'll be able to subsume the beer and wine at the restaurant location. It's no lack, it's a restaurant by table service, people who want to have a beverage with the... And so, I would hope that the council will give approval, and we'll go through the process. I'd be glad to answer any questions, but I know there are other people here who wish to speak in favor, so I ask you a favor.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to speak in favor?
Francis Martinez, North Shore Racing Business Association, Thirty-Three Santa Street, Francisco, and with another restaurant in my business association, and I'd love to see that everyone agrees with that petition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Altman from the Secretary of State, the Association of the Boston School of Business, the customer, El Dorado, very organized, for lunch and evening hours, and it would be a perfect complement to their business. The women that work there are no nonsense women, who are very, very organized, and I think that they will provide at all the freedom, and they choose, they will improve their expressions, and it's very big announcement, good news, people have, have to keep today and consuming, really scared of having lunch, having a big year or something, and go on down the next one.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to speak in favor? Is there anybody here that's in favor that doesn't want to speak, show hands? Anybody else in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishes to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition? Anybody wishes to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishes to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counselor Foitucci.
I just wanted to add, we have correspondence from public property chief of police, and he said there are nothing of significance and concern in terms of police responses to that location, and they have no objection to the application.
If we can make that part of the record, that would be great. Counselor Foitucci?
I figured it must mark myself. We do food. I just like to, um, have the license, one of them, guy, we have seven days.
Motion made, and seconded. Before we close the council, the public hearing, Counselor Foitucci, would you like to treat the restaurant a little free advertising, and help us out with the food?
Sure, the restaurant needs to good. Please do.
Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Caneal, Absin, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Foitucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Panam?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
And if I'm reading this right, it's Twenty-two Union Street?
Public hearing, be set down, petition of Pedro Patricio to add an auto rental business to an existing auto party business at Forty-Six Bennett Street, with dogs of operation from eight AM to seven PM, under proof Saturday.
What's the motion to council? Motion to set down for public hearing. Wait there a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Caneal, Absin, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Foitucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Panam?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Unfinished business? Uh, theways committee?
Counselor Lozey.
Mr. President, unanimous, the vote of the city. Motion approved.
Thank you. Motion made, seconded. All those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries.
Public safety committee, the following individuals are appointed constables, resolved with the segment, Charles DeMorey, Adrian Dol... Sorry, I was paid. Kenneth Brady, Charles Kuhl, Melissa McLaughlin, Juan Sanchez, Andre Quzman, Juan Matos, Hector Madrano, and Adriano Dolick.
Excuse me. Counselor Barton, what's it?
The man who's going on here.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Caneal, Absin, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Foitucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Panam?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. License committee?
Unanimous, the vote of the table.
Motion made, seconded, to accept the report. All those in favor? Opposed.
Public property, we have one order, and they request an emergency audit of the may have been authorized for signing easement to sixty-two Phase H of Lynn. A permanent easement in, on, over, under, and through certain relocated in Lynn, as it's county Massachusetts, and will fully describe as easement areas, steps planned from City of Lynn on a plan of land in Lynn, showing easement from the City of Lynn to Eugene J. Casey Jr., due to date Casey.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Caneal, Absin, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Foitucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Panam?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. And we have several financial orders, I don't know if you want to read them in the consideration.
Please.
Okay. I'd have that the city control...
Just if anybody wants to take any one of these individuals, please look me up.
I'd have that the city control to take following actions. Transfer the sum of two thousand dollars and zero cents from the reserve fund to the interest expense fund. Transfer the sum of one thousand forty-six dollars and eighty-one cents from the reserve funds of G.A.R. unpaid bills of prior year. Transfer the sum of seven thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars and zero cents from the reserve funds to the treasurer's unpaid bill of prior year. Transfer the sum of one thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty-three cents from the city clerk's expense to the city clerk's unpaid bills of prior year. Transfer the sum of seven hundred thirty-five dollars and zero cents from the pier dogs' expense to pier dogs' unpaid bills of prior year. Transfer the sum of three thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars and thirteen cents from the fire department expense to the Lynn Fire Department unpaid bills of prior year. Transfer the sum of fifty dollars and seventy-four cents from outside, IT outside communication media expense to IT unpaid bills of prior year. Transfer the sum of fourteen thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents from DPW sanitation expense to DPW unpaid bills of prior year. Transfer the sum of eighteen thousand eight hundred seven dollars and forty-six cents from police expense to the police unpaid bills of prior year. Transfer the sum of one hundred thousand dollars and zero cents from the accounts of insurance premium to workers' compensation premium account. Transfer the sum of twenty-five thousand six hundred seventeen dollars and zero cents from the accounts of treasurer's payroll to assesses payroll. Certify and available fund the amount of twenty-two thousand thirty dollars and zero cents as allotted to the City of Lynn Fire Department of the Department of Emergency Management for the FY twelve EMP grant. Certify and available fund the amount of one hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred dollars and zero cents as allotted to the City of Lynn School Department of Elementary and Education for ELL enrichment programs. Certify and available fund the amount of forty thousand dollars and zero cents as allotted to the City of Lynn School Department of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for Peking Homes Grant. Certify and available fund the amount of ten thousand dollars and zero cents as allotted to the City of Lynn School Department of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for SP bulk skills training. And certify and available fund the amount of sixty-four thousand dollars and zero cents as allotted to the City of Lynn School Department of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for Two-O-Nine Rapper.
Unanimous, thank you, Counselor Foitucci. Take that to the floor, the motion. Counselor Seer, you're the one that you have staying on.
Um, yes.
Which one's that? We'll take that one separately.
I believe it was in turn of those.
Okay. You include that for this one. Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Caneal, Absin, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Foitucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Panam?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
On the emergency, on those, roll call, please.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Caneal, Absin, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Foitucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Panam?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
On the emergency, on those, roll call, please.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Caneal, Absin, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Foitucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Phelan?
Yes.